The first item tonight is a public hearing to solicit input on the renaming of Town Hall Conference Rooms. Please sign in with the Clerk of Counsel to be recognized to comment for this public hearing. Please state your name, address, and limit only your comments to this topic, the naming of the conference rooms. Bloomfield residents will have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up right now?
Deputy Town Manager, would you be able to read out the proposed names and like the details? So those that aren't well aware of what the item is can become more acquainted.
The conference rooms?
Yes, like what the proposed names are. Or it says that it's attached. My agenda doesn't have it, but perhaps we can read it out. So those that, like I said, don't know about it can become more acquainted.
All right, let me see if my memory serves me right. In the Town Manager's office, the conference room is the Martin Luther King Conference Room. Conference Room Five, the Winton Berry Conference Room. Those are the two conference rooms upstairs. Downstairs, across from this here, this chamber is Philly Park. Help me out, India. Philly Park next door. And then Persian Park on the far end. You're welcome. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
At this time, I'd like to call the council meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have roll call of all counselors. And all counselors are present. We have Counsel Mike Oliver on Zoom. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is for the nomination of Mayor. Per Section 302 of the Charter, the council shall meet on the call of the Town Manager within two weeks after election and organize by electing by majority vote of all its members, one of its members to have the title of Mayor and serve as the chief elected official for the town of Bloomfield and as Chairperson of the Council for a term of two years. And in addition, by majority vote, the council shall elect the Deputy Mayor, who shall serve as Vice Chair of the Council. After which time, the council shall appoint the Town Treasurer and the Town Attorney, both for a two-year term. The council shall also appoint the Clerk of Counsel. At this time, I will call for the nomination of the position of Mayor. Nominators will be limited to two-minute remark. And please note, according to Robert's Rule of Order, Section 46.6, no seconding of the nomination is required.
Counselor Lloyd, thank you. I'd like to nominate Tony Harrington for the position of Mayor. I do so with full support of his aptitude, his commitment, and his dedication to this community. He has served well, three terms, as many people have served multiple terms here. He has shown his tried and true diligence and dedication to Bloomfield, and I truly believe that he will be able to bring unity to our community, who will be able to help us heal, and he will be able to lead us into a continued vision of growing and developing Bloomfield into a community that is welcoming and accepting of all people.
Counselor Harrington, do you consent to this nomination? Are there any further nominations? Counselor Mahan?
I don't necessarily plan on making a nomination, but just speaking on the one that's currently on the floor, is that permissible right now?
No.
Okay.
Are there any further nominations? I'll ask the last time, are there any further nominations? Counselor Mahan?
Thank you. Well, since you're asking the last time, actually, I will go with the nomination that was the people's choice, the individual that received the most votes. But beyond that, since we're going to stick to the Charter, and that's what most folks have been touting as the reason why their decisions are being made. I believe that those that framed the Charter were looking for us to make this decision based off of the person's ability to lead, their compassion for the community, their service. Now, there's one individual who, beyond many, beyond everyone, everyone else that is on this dice, including myself, has continued to lead despite position, despite being on this council. I've seen this person time and time again show up for Bloomfield. They did that as Mayor previously, and they continue to do so. Going into these next couple of years, my colleague, Counsel Lloyd, mentioned that we need unity. I believe there's no greater way to unite the community than by honoring their voice, which is very clear in this election. They chose someone, and we deserve to, we should honor and respect their will. So the person that I'll be nominating this evening is Suzette DeBeatham Brown.
Thank you. Counselor DeBeatham Brown, do you consent to this nomination? Thank you. Are there any further nominations? I see no further nominations are on the floor. Therefore, I will close the nominations. Thank you. Now, I'm going to take a roll call vote with each counselor. When I call on your name, please state which counselor you're voting for. Clerk of Counsel? And I'm going in alphabetical order. Counselor Todd Cooper?
Anthony Tony Harrington.
Counselor Suzette DeBeatham Brown? Counselor Darrell Goodwin?
Tony Harrington.
Counselor Tony Harrington?
Tony Harrington.
Counselor Cindy Lloyd?
Anthony Tony Harrington.
Counselor Shamar McMahon?
Mahan?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Common mistake. Suzette DeBeatham Brown?
Counselor Joe Merritt?
Tony Harrington.
Counselor Mike Oliver?
Counselor Anthony Tony Harrington.
Counselor? Order, please. Counselor Elizabeth Waterhouse?
Anthony Harrington.
Counselor Harrington has received the majority of votes and is now Mayor for a two-year term in Bloomfield. Order, please. Order. Order in the council chamber, please. Order in the council chamber, please. Thank you. Mayor, the meeting's yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am sorry, we must have order in the chamber.
You'll have an opportunity to speak during citizen statements. You'll have an opportunity to speak.
If you do want an opportunity to speak, you have to sign in, please. And just a point of note, order. Any outbursts in this chamber, you will need to leave the chamber. Thank you very much. At this time, I will call for the nominations for the position of Deputy Mayor. Nominations will be limited to two-minute remarks. Point of order? We need to... Okay. Can we close the door, please?
We can't close the door. We need to have it open for folks to get in. We'll just continue the meeting.
Who's the mayor?
Okay, okay. So Clerk of Counsel, please man the timer for counsel. Please note, according to Robert's Rule of Order, Section 46.6, no seconding of the nomination is required. The process for nominations will be that I will accept all nominations, then close the nominations, then take a roll call vote on each nomination. Please raise your hands to be recognized for the purposes of Deputy Mayor. Counselor Cooper?
I nominate Cindy Lloyd for the position and role of Deputy Mayor of the town of Bloomfield, County of Hartford, State of Connecticut.
Counselor Lloyd, do you consent to the nomination?
I do.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Counselor Mahan?
You know, this could have been a great opportunity for the Democratic Caucus to form some sort of compromise. It was very clear that, of course, you guys weren't going to vote for Suzette to be Mayor, despite the will of the residents, despite, despite...
Counselor Mahan?
Despite the residents.
Who are you nominating?
And I'll get there. I'm allowed to, a two-minute speech, am I not?
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Once you make the nomination.
And I'm well within that. And without further interruption, please. You know, that would have been a great opportunity. Now, you guys...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. The Counselor has not made a nomination. He is able to speak after he makes the nomination. That is Robert's Rules of Order.
So I'm doing exactly what I did the first time that I spoke.
Please.
And I'll continue.
Please follow. It would help.
Counselor Cooper, please. Now...
Please make the nomination, Counselor.
It's a great opportunity to form compromise here, despite you guys not wanting to, of course, move down that road.
Counselor Mahan? Please.
So I'll help you guys in that process in nominating Suzette DeBeatham Brown for Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
I do, hold on, I'm out two minutes. And you guys have interrupted me throughout. I will continue. Now, there is, like I said, there's ample opportunity for compromise here. The voters spoke, and they spoke very clearly. You know, I understand what the Charter says, and so I'll speak just to that. Like I said, this person has ample experience in leadership, has showed great compassion and service to this community in many aspects. I've actually, you know, served alongside her, not just here on this council, but as far as serving meals to the public with the Blue Hills Fire on many occasions. On Amna's, at Amna's, when that restaurant was here at one point. This individual has displayed all the qualities needed in leadership, what we need in order to move forward as a community. You know, when I think of a servant leader...
Point of order. I believe the two minutes has been expired.
You guys have taken up so much of my time, and now I can't get my two minutes. And that's very surprising coming from you, Counsel Goodwin. Very surprising coming from you.
We will give you an extra fifteen seconds. Please continue.
As you can see, they're setting the tone for what the next few years are going to look like. So Bloomfield, please pay attention.
Counselor Ethan Brown, do you consent?
While I appreciate Counselor Mahan's thoughts and sentiment and the sentiment of the people of the town of Bloomfield, I don't. Thanks.
Yeah, you have to turn on your mic.
I thought it was on.
It's on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
While I appreciate the sentiment of Counselor Mahan and the will of the residents of the town of Bloomfield, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I see no further nominations on the floor. Therefore, nominations are closed. We will now take a roll call vote for Counselor Lloyd to serve as Deputy Mayor. Counselor Waterhouse?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Cindy Lloyd.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Mahan?
Nay.
Counselor Lloyd?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Darrell Goodwin?
Aye.
Counselor DeBeatham Brown?
No.
Counselor Todd Cooper?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselor Lloyd has received the majority of votes and is now Deputy Mayor. The two-year term for our Town Charter. Thank you. At this time, we will have citizen statements and petitions. So as the Clerk of Counsel prepares that list, we want to inform anyone that's online to prepare their statement as well. We'll start in the House.
I have Robert Berman.
Robert Berman, 8 Hyrum Lane in Bloomfield. Members of the Town Council, Town Manager, and Town Attorney. Section 305 of the Town Charter reads, and I quote, "During the term for which he or she is elected, no member of the council shall hold any other office, elective or appointed, in or under the town of Bloomfield, nor shall any member of the council serve as a member of a charter revision commission for the town of Bloomfield." Section 15-55, Establishment of Affordable Housing Committee. Membership states that the Mayor and minority party council member are members of the committee, that the rest of the council are ad hoc members. This is still a proposed ordinance. I asked when it was in public hearing, does this be cleaned up as it contradicted the Town Charter? It still has not been cleaned up. My question to the Council, Town Manager, and Town Attorney is, why is this still sitting the way it is? Section 502 of the Town Charter requires, requires that the Town Manager be a resident of the town of Bloomfield, and I quote, "shall reside in the town during his or her tenure of office." Close quote. There is no legal opinion issued by a Town Attorney redefining the term reside. Therefore, the plain meaning of the term applies. As the Town Manager does not currently reside in the town of Bloomfield, this situation violates the Charter. All nine of you and the Town Manager swore to uphold the Town Charter. The Town Manager does not have a residence in the town of Bloomfield in the very near future. This continuation of either Charter must be addressed by this council. Otherwise, you also will be in violation of the Charter. I'm going to, for the time being, ignore the violations of the Charter that were committed previously, but not going forward from this point in time. I'm not the only taxpayer and resident of Bloomfield watching what is going on in town. Other residents are also. Council was already in court about a violation of the Charter during the term of the previous council. I would think that would be enough of a warning to pay attention to the Charter. And I have copies of the Charter and that ordinance for each member of council, the Town Manager, and the Town Attorney.
If you could hand them to the Clerk, she'll deliver them. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Next, I have Renee James.
Good evening. Renee James, 23 Mayfair Road. I'm coming to speak tonight as the Chair of the Bloomfield DTC, and I want to congratulate everyone on the council for a very strong election. And thanks to the DTC for all of their work in getting the word out to our residents about the election. If you didn't know, voter turnout was much higher in Bloomfield and across the state, across the nation, actually. And there was a very strong blue wave, and very proud of that as a member of the, as a Chair of the DTC. But I do want to talk about when I was campaigning this past election and often alongside Counselor Mike Oliver. We talked to a lot of residents who expressed some of their concerns with us. And so I want to share with the council what I heard. A lot of residents, especially Mike and I live in Blue Hills area. So we talked a lot about the work with paving roads. That's something that, in our area, definitely want to see continued work in that area. I know on Mayfair Road where I live, I've said it to a couple of people, but, you know, we're anxious to have our road repaved as well. Definitely a lot of sidewalk repair we're looking for, just some attention to our neighborhood. Because in the lower Blue Hills area, we have a lot of homes, a lot of single homeowners, single-family homes that definitely don't want to feel forgotten in all of the mix that's happening in Bloomfield. So I know you guys have a long road ahead of you as a member of TPZ. Definitely looking forward to more housing options. And I know you guys are working hard on Arabella and having something on the Blue Hills area there for senior or age-restricted housing. So that will be a great add to our community and more opportunities like that. So we're looking forward to all the work you do on Winton Berry area, center of town area. Definitely getting some small businesses in Bloomfield and focusing on how we can just continue to grow our community. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mark Saunders?
Hi, I'm Mark Saunders, 13 Penn Road. I've been a Bloomfield resident for thirty years now. And my heart rate is up. I'm currently serving my third year as a Fair Rent Commissioner and previously four years on the DTC. And I've been out of the picture for a good number of years, what, two or three years? And so I've seen firsthand how residents make their voices heard. And it's not just a vote at the end of the day. It begins when we elect the members of our town committee, our DTC, which I was a member of, district by district. And we choose sixty-five people to represent us. This year, those elected DTC members chose not to endorse Suzette. Still, through a primary process, voters added her to the November ticket and then elected her to council. So congratulations, Suzette. And that's democracy at work. And I applaud that. I think we all do. However, winning four additional votes in the process does not create a mandate to become Mayor, especially when that claim is not supported by the Town Charter. I've read Suzette's writings in the town paper. She often speaks of respect, civility, honesty, honest communication. And I ask, is it truly in the spirit of civility to press for a presiding role over the five elected Democratic incumbents who initially endorsed someone else? You've been out of the picture for a while, and you want to come back to be at the front of the line. I don't... Anyway, Suzette, I think you've also spoken about ending all the council infighting. Yet what we're seeing tonight feels very much like a continuation of the same conflict that I left four years ago, and I left because I couldn't take it. And it's for positions like what you... I can't talk to you, I know I can't talk to you directly, so I'm sorry about that. I have things to say. Anyway, I believe that this is your opportunities, Suzette, if you'd like, to lead by example, to step back, to participate fully and inclusively as a member of the council with whoever you can bring on board with your own heart, which you have a lot of, and put your call for peace and collaboration into action. This is an opportunity for this council to rise above all of what I've been seeing over the last periods of time. So put your egos aside and do the work that you're selected to do for us.
Thank you.
Bradley Klein?
Hi, Bradley Klein, 82 Tariff Hill Road, Bloomfield. I've only been here for thirty-seven years, so I simply want to correct a misimpression that appears to have been circulated again by at least one member of the council. And I'm disappointed to hear the notion that the selection of a Mayor is based upon the voters because there is no provision in the Charter for anything but council manic decision-making. And I applaud the council for fulfilling that role. There is no provision in the Charter. There is a tradition, which has not always been upheld, of the highest vote getter. But the Charter is clear, and as a member of the Charter Revision Commission, we carefully considered alternatives to the wording, and we have kept that wording about the decision to appoint a Mayor being in the hands of the elected officials as a collective body. And I congratulate you for having made that decision. I would also urge you to go ahead and approve the Charter revision that we have drafted. And it clearly establishes the importance of council manic governance and downplaying the role of a strong executive Mayor. So in that spirit, I applaud the decision. I know it's difficult. I know it's painful. But any notion that the highest voter getter automatically becomes Mayor is not supported by the Charter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherri Levine? Sherri Levine.
I'd like to say congratulations to Suzette and to Darryl, the mayor, reelection, and everybody else here. My hope is that you can all work together to help us residents of Bloomfield. You know, when I go online and I read some of the comments, and I'm talking about some seniors saying, "I can't afford my taxes. I'm going to have to leave my home, which I've been in for so many years." That makes me sick to my stomach. These people have been here. They've paid their taxes on time. And now, when we come to this crazy budget and it's hard for them. They don't know what to do. I don't even know what to do. But I'd like to ask the mayor, what do you have in place to help our seniors?
Right now, what we're attempting to do is first, bring some more job, bring some more businesses to the town so we can collect more taxes and reduce the burden on our homeowners. We also have more affordable housing that is being developed. We have 164 units that will be coming on Blue Hills Avenue shortly. And basically, the whole bottom line is economic development. That will reduce the burden of taxes on our seniors and on the town. I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to participate, so.
Oh, oh. Okay, and I'd just like to say one more thing. Shamar, thank you. Thank you for sticking up for the residents of Bloomfield. You really came through for us, even though we didn't win some things. We recognize you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I live at 4 Nolan Drive. Sherri Levine, most of the time.
Thank you.
Robert Simmons.
Robert Simmons, 23 Cape Well Drive. I've been a resident since 1968, and I would just like to congratulate all nine council members. Congratulations. And congratulations to Mayor Harrington, and congratulations to Deputy Mayor Lloyd. I'm confident that the nine individuals up here can work together. And you guys don't have to agree on everything, but I need for you guys to respect each other. And you all know me. And if I feel something's not going right for us, the residents, I will come speak. But at this point, I'm just here to congratulate you because I'm expecting great things from all of you. Does it matter your position? I know you guys will do good work for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Potato, Padano? Padano, stand corrected, Padano.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Anne Padano, 9 Old Orchard Road. My husband and I have been residents here since 1986. Forgive me for not having prepared remarks because I wasn't planning to speak. But I do want to speak, and I want to, first of all, thank Shamar, who I did not know at all until a few months ago. But he has provided an outstanding example of putting the residents of this town first, speaking out when he has often been a lone voice on the council. That takes great courage, and it takes great commitment. And so, thank you. I can say this because I'm old. I would not have been able to do that when I was your age. I too hope that things will improve. I have been deeply disappointed over the past two years in terms of the lack of progress in this town, in terms of some of the apparent infighting on the council. I greatly supported Suzette, whom I also didn't know before, and came to know her over the past several months. One of the things that most impressed me was that I said to her, "What have you learned? What's different from when you were on the council before?" And her answers to that were so convincing that I thought, "Yeah, got to vote for her." For those who were on the council the past two years, other than Shamar, I'm disappointed. I don't think you put residents first. I think you had, I think you had too many non-public meetings and agreements and whatnot. I hope that will change. I think as residents, we demand that that changes. We need transparency. We need to know what's going on. We need to have our voices heard. I was also disappointed, I sent you all, with the exception of Suzette, an email last night. The only person who answered my email was Shamar. I, you have been elected for a reason. You need to come through for us. You need to be responsive. You need to listen to us, and above all, you need to let us know what you're doing, what you're thinking. We, we're intelligent people. We deserve to be respected. And we absolutely deserve to have you always have our best interests at heart. You have a chance. You have a chance, and I will certainly be watching. And I think many other people will be watching to make sure that you do put us first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Beckford.
Good evening, everyone. Wasn't planning on saying anything, but, well, you know how stuff goes. I'd like to congratulate the town council. I know each of you do care about this town in ways that maybe most of us don't understand. But you've stepped forward. You are engaged. We can debate what that means to everybody, but the bulk of my comments actually aren't to you at all, but to the voters. We have a responsibility. You know, if you want better, you have to show up. It's not complicated. We are a small town, maybe 23,000 people, something like that. 15,000 are registered voters. You want to know how many people show actually voted? 4,000 and change. That's like 30%. That's not good. That sucks. So we're celebrating over 4,000 people who voted. That's not a landslide. That's a gift. So the responsibility is on us, the voters, to show up. But the other side of the problem is there's a reason why we don't show up. How can you on one hand pay $7,000 for taxes? And as we speak, there is a house in Bloomfield right now for sale. You want to know how much the annual taxes are? 12 grand. That's ridiculous. So while we think the council is jockeying to be king of an anthill, because that's pretty much what we're doing here, they're fighting to be king over an anthill. Let's get down to brass taxes. Most people live here because it's quiet. They mind their own business. Nobody bothers you. You can get some sleep. My social life is someplace else, so why get involved? But why should you pay $7,000 to sleep? I can do that for free anywhere. So we need to get down to business. And by the way, Popeyes is nice, but you can't really bring people in on Popeyes alone. I don't eat Popeyes. So we really need to get serious. The East has been ignored for decades, not just this two years. I'm not going to lay that on their feet. It's been ignored since I was in high school. And that's before then. I grew up here. I went to high school with that man's son. And Mr. Merritt has been a part of this community for years. He has seen a lot.
Thank you very much.
Kim Beckford, 6 Penny Road.
Pat Davis.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to all of our newly elected councillor, Pat Davis, 4 Lisa Lane. I wasn't planning to speak, but in preparation of this day, I have been wanting to speak for a very long time. I was at a conference just this past weekend with the NAACP, and I was sitting at the table as an observer with the sponsors. One of the sponsors came over to me and said, "Pat, what the hell is going on in Bloomfield? So when you guys think that nobody's watching, and there's only 10 people on Facebook that are responding to issues that are affecting us here in Bloomfield, I beg to differ. There are a lot of things that are going on that are impacting us in Bloomfield that the state of Connecticut is really aware of." And I was embarrassed and ashamed. Suzette DeBeetham-Brown, I want to give you your props because not only have you really put your foot down and to come back for not being nominated, and then to end up being, even by four votes, the top leader of the vote getter. That speaks volumes to who you are. So just continue to be who you are and continue to do the work. You've always been present, and I've been present. I've lived in this town for a very long time. I've been very active in this town, in these environments, not just at Popeyes. I've been in this town, and I've been involved, and I've been at these council meetings, and I know how it works. And I'm very happy for you. Mayor Tony Harrington, I have to really give you the most respect and props right now because when I was struggling with certain things, and when I was looking to be the chair of the DTC, he nominated me when nobody else believed in me. So I really appreciate that, and you stood by me, and you have, and you will continue to do so. I know that. So I know that I can count on you. And I know that this council, I pray that you all pull it together and realize that I'm a person that's about to lose my home because I have, the taxes have elevated. That's important to me. I've lived here for a very long time, raised my kids here. And not right now, the taxes and the things that you guys have, like, kind of like, I don't want to say ignored, but not followed through. And we need you guys to follow through. I want to be there. I don't want this contention. I don't want us to argue. I don't want us to fuss. I don't want us to fight. I want us to be a community that's strong, and I'm here. I'm around for it. So if anybody has anything that they want to bring to me that they're afraid to bring to you, guess what? I'll bring it. But I thank you for your time, and I really do appreciate you. And I hope you guys put it together. I really do, for the town of Bloomfield's sake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hurry.
We have.
Hurry.
And I'm sorry. Thank you. It's just, I'm sorry, guys. You, one of you guys said it earlier, that, I think it was Klein, said that we are, tradition has always been the top vote getter gets it. It was a tradition, but it wasn't in the charter. So I hope that now that we know that, that we will honor the charter and not tradition, if that's what we're going to do, because we can't have it both ways. Figure out what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have someone online. I have Lori Gillian, who I'm going to bring in to talk. Lori, you have the floor.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of you. And to thank you for serving. It's a big commitment. I just wanted to ask and have the plea that you bring back the town forums to elicit citizens. Oh, I'm sorry, 43 Maple Avenue. I've made Bloomfield my home for 27 years. Anyways, as I was saying, was a plea to bring back the forums that we've had, we had several years ago to elicit citizens' concerns. Several years ago, they were held and with quite success. Changes were made, and I think we see the town works best when it elicits the citizens and involves the citizens. I think you all ran on the ticket to say that you were going to listen, and so hopefully you'll take action. Of course, you know my issue and our Maple Borough residents going all the way up to Brown. We particularly feel that traffic safety is a real concern here. And you've heard it from us, speeders, industrial trucks, terror, excuse me, industrial trucks on our town residential roads, our collector's streets, this should not happen. And it is really affecting our quality of life. And the loud mufflers terrorizing residents. So I would just ask you to bring back the town forums and listen to the citizens. And I think that we can be successful like our surrounding towns, which have made significant strides. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
At this time, I ask, is there anyone else online that would like to speak? Anyone else online? Going once? Twice? Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now move into item number six, council business, no business. Item 2026, 26, consider and take action regarding the appointment of the town treasurer. The town councillors appoint Ola Ena as town treasurer. Town Charter, Chapter 5, Appointed Officers, Section 501, Appointments by Council. Section B, the town council shall also appoint a town attorney and a town treasurer, each for a term of two years, beginning in the third Tuesday, with the third Tuesday in November, in the odd number of years, and shall fill any vacancies which may occur in either office for the unexpired portion of the term. Each shall hold office until a successor is appointed and qualified. The town treasurer shall have the powers and duties prescribed by general law and shall not also hold the office of clerk of the town council.
Motion to appoint Ola Ena as town treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, say nay. Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay. The mayor votes yea. The motion passes. Next item, 2026, 27, consider and take action regarding the appointment of the town attorney. This item is placed on the agenda as required by Charter, Section 501. Should the council wish to move forward, this is the following motion that would be in order. Town councillors appoint Andrew Crumbie as town attorney. Town Charter, Chapter 5, Appointed Officers, Section 501, Appointments by Council. I believe this was just read. If you'd like me to reread it? Okay, we won't. Do we have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, nay?
I have a comment. Mr. Mayor, are we, are you just opening up, or are we, are we able to speak? Okay, I did want to speak on this motion. I had my hand raised.
We're calling the floor.
I had my hand raised.
Councilor Mahan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm not able to support the motion that's currently on the floor to nominate Attorney Crumbie as the town attorney for several reasons. One of the first reasons is there are still a lot of outstanding questions that have not been answered. The first of these is around billing. As some folks may know, there were many questions around how much money was really being allocated to Attorney Crumbie's firm during these last two years. It came up for question with our previous purchasing manager, which led to a whole litany of the FOI Commission and so on and so forth. Those questions have still not been answered. I've asked, I've asked for information regarding the billing. I don't believe I received all of it during the FOI Commission. Similar outcomes were found as well. In fact, the town manager was fined as a result of not providing all of the information. So, that's one of the reasons why I cannot support the motion that's currently on the floor. The second is due to many instances of asking questions, asking for opinions in the heated moment, when it counted, before decisions needed to be made. And I was told on various instances, I cannot provide an answer. That gives me no room to operate as a councilperson, to do my job, to represent the residents, if I cannot get an answer from our town attorney right then and there. Or at least, if, you know, if my colleagues were even willing to table some of these motions, as I have presented many times, so that we did have time to get an answer in before we made a decision, maybe I wouldn't have such strong feelings about it. But being pushed to, not receiving answers to these very important questions, it's concerning. And for someone that's serving in that position, we need someone that's going to be able to answer the questions before decisions are going to be made. The third is, I do not believe that all members of this council are served equally by this town attorney. The last two years have displayed that to me, that unfortunately, I'm the stepchild of the council. And so, and I've been shown that, not only by the town attorney, I won't go into others, but, you know, the town attorney has also displayed that to me. So, I have, I don't have much faith going forward that that individual can serve in the capacity equitably or fairly to all members of this council, can answer the questions. And like I said, there's a big question mark on the billing, which is affecting, which of course affects you guys, the taxpayers, most of the council.
Thank you, Councilor Mahan.
So...
We're at three minutes.
Just a couple seconds. I'll just sum it up. I do, though, want to give credit to one of the attorneys that is from, is from Ashley Moore. I do think that she's phenomenal. I do have to give credit where it's due. Ashley Moore has been great. Anytime I've asked her a question, she's answered. But I don't have much faith in Attorney Crumbie at this moment, so I will be voting no on this motion.
Thank you. We do have another counselor that would like to have a word.
Thank you.
Counselor Cooper.
Sir. You know, with my coming up in making the motion that we nominate Attorney Andrew Crumbie as our attorney, I have full confidence that Attorney Crumbie is able to handle the business of the town of Bloomfield very well. And so, all councilors here are aware of the, our previous council, and the actions that were taken or were not taken, that have placed Bloomfield in financial difficulties that, were it not for our current town attorney, we'd all be in trouble as taxpayers. And so, that was a type of service that you received for 30 years, approximately. You have an attorney who has had to go in and review previous cases for the town of Bloomfield, to ensure that we were served properly, that our taxes were not affected, and that we were not sued to the point of bankruptcy. So, we can return to what others think is transparency, or we can move forward with a capable and competent and proficient lawyer who is able to serve our town. There may be issues. There may be. It's all in how you approach people. Are you doing it for the sake of getting something done and for transparency? Or are you doing it as just a curmudgeon to gum up the works of government? I am of the opinion that we move forward with not gumming up the works of government, that we move forward. I don't want to rehash or revisit any of those old things, but I do place full confidence in the representation that we currently have. And so, for that matter, not only will I, have I brought up the nomination and, you know, to the forefront, but I will be voting for our current attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a call to question.
Mr. Mayor, before we go there...
Question has been called.
My hand was raised before that question was called. If anyone can clearly answer how many billable hours were paid...
Counselor.
That will give me some confidence. Can anyone answer that question on the dial?
The question is called...
Point of order.
Can anyone answer that question?
Point of order. All councilors that may have desired to do so have not spoken yet. Councilor Mahan?
Is there anyone else? Would she call the question?
You guys are waffling back and forth. It's either the question was called, or others speak.
Vote on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we probably have to call it for each individual, because I'm, we had... Okay.
Are you asking for a roll call vote?
Yes. Counselor Waterhouse?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt? Counselor Mahan?
Nay.
Counselor Lloyd?
Aye.
Mayor Harrington? I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Lloyd? Excuse me.
I don't know.
Mayor Harrington? Aye. Counselor Goodman?
Aye.
Counselor DeBeetham-Brown?
Abstain.
Abstain. And Counselor Cooper?
Aye.
Okay. The motion passes, and we move to the next item, which will be, I need to make a point, item 2026-28, consider and take action regarding the appointment of Board of Assessment Appeals will be tabled at this time. We will call this up at our next meeting.
Can I just, since you're doing that, can I suggest that 2026-30 also be tabled, as there's no backup information available?
Yes. Thank you. We have one more. Okay. Okay, so...
Yes, I was just, since he's tabling, I was just thinking that we could just package it together.
Okay, it's okay. So, item 2026-29, which was the next item, consider and take action regarding the appointment of clerk of council.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, it's on your tab.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention. Mayor votes aye. Motion passes.
Without debate?
No.
At least one. So, the last item we did make reference to that we will table? Okay, okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.